Welcome, everybody, to the December 7th Board of Commissioners, meaning it's the last meeting of this year and for some of it is our last meeting because it's the last meeting of the term. So we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we'll move on to roll call.
Commissioner Beaman.
President.
Commissioner Hodge.
President.
Commissioner Jefferson.
President.
Commissioner LaBarre.
President.
Commissioner Machieski.
Present.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Schenk.
Here.
Thank you. We have a forum.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, we are going to honor a few, a few of our residents. We are going to start by honoring Coach Sandy Sanders for his forty years of service to Washtenaw County as a basketball coach, mentor, and community leader, and Commissioner Ricky Jefferson is going to do the honors.
As a matter of fact, these two are two coaches together. Thank you for coming this evening. Honorary Commissioners of the Sport, I stand here today with you and with this audience and with Mr. Sanders' wife to commemorate the forty years of service that he has given to our community. We have had many of men who have come through his program that have went on to higher education and sports and into professional sports and who come back and deal with those who he continues to help of the younger ages. He has been a teacher, a mentor, a confidant, a father, and he has been someone who life has given this opportunity to, that he takes a lot of pride, a lot of joy in, and that his wife by his side continue to allow our citizens and our students to benefit from his expertise, his coaching in basketball. Now, therefore, being resolved that Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners recognize Coach Sandy Sanders for his service to our community as a coach, mentor, and community leader, and it is signed by each member of the Board of Commissioners all nine. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I had to ask Commissioner, do they want me to say something because most of the time is Commissioners talking and not coaches. But, uh, thank you. Thank you. Thank all of you. It's been a lot of fun, last forty years. I'm looking around to see if I know some of the faces, the mothers and fathers, and I'm sure I've had some of your kids in my camp. I've enjoyed them. Hopefully, they enjoyed me. I'm a taskmaster. You know, your parents don't spend money to come to my camp to sit on the wall and pout and tell me you're tired. So at the end of the day, you got sleepy kids and kids that have learned a lot, and I've learned a lot. It's been a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful experience. I want to introduce you to my wife, Ellen Gold. Forty-one years of marriage. And I have a son that track coach at Boston University. He's helped me a lot. And I have another son in Chicago, and he's all done with school, the masters and all that stuff. But they've really helped me a great deal to put this camp together. I'm puffing and hovering because I have dementia. And so I'm encouraging everybody, kids with dementia, old folks with dementia, get involved. It'll help the community a great deal because once you let people know what you have, they'll let you know what they got. And it goes around in a circle, and it really helps people. I've had kids from all over the country come to my country, my, my camp. I had teams from France and Africa. They've come to Ann Arbor, and they've enjoyed Ann Arbor. We've enjoyed going there. But I can, I'm gonna stop talking. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Next. I want to let everybody know that later on tonight, we will be considering, and I I will guarantee passing, a resolution honoring Stephanie Thacker for thirty years of service to Washtenaw County. Thank you, Ms. Thacker. Your appreciation is greatly served. Oh, I think we have some comments. I was told that there wasn't going to be, and I'm so glad that there are. Thank you, Mr. Sheehan.
You bet. Thank you, Board. Board, Stephanie Thacker's been working for Washtenaw County since nineteen eighty-eight, and I've been fortunate enough to work alongside her for about half that time. She's a highly valued member of our team, managing a myriad of complex funds and financial transactions that I try to know only what I need to know about, and she keeps our ship sailing in the right direction through, through calm seas. She is a person dedicated to public service and has joyfully participated in our community service through Wash, Washington County United Way and other activities. Her retirement after thirty-four and a half years will be a loss to both the community that she's worked for and to our departmental golf team. I would like to join the board in thanking her for years of service and wishing her the best luck. Stephanie, you will be missed.
Thank you.
She's got her whole clan with her, so the preference is to go out and take pictures outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so next we'll be moving on to public comment. Everybody has three minutes. Please come up to the, the mic and tell us your name and, and where you're from. And then there's a light. It'll start out green. It'll turn yellow to tell you that it's time to finish up your comments. And then when it turns red, that means it's, it's time for the next person to take their. Is there anybody who'd like to make a, a public comment? Come on up and do so, please.
Hello, my name's Diana Vermael. I am here on behalf of Buenos Aires, you know, through Jewish Family Service. We want to say thank you for considering us and that we are really excited to get to work. Personally, I work directly with the students and people in the community, so I'm really excited to have people put their faith in us to do the right thing in our community. So again, we want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person? Okay, then we'll look at, to see if there's anybody who would like to, to make a comment over Zoom.
Uh, there, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, item four, or yeah, item four is Commissioner, follow-up to public participation. Anyone? Thank you. Special, oh, sorry, liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports tonight? Doesn't look like it. So then we'll move on to our, our special order business. And it's with deep sadness that I call for a moment of silence in memory of Douglas Fuller, who had been for many years Chair of the Washtenaw County Road Commission and, and a road commissioner and who loved roads more than anybody I have ever met. And so he passed away recently and, and he was a really important part of Washtenaw County, and so let's all observe a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. Doug Fuller will be missed. Next, we have a public hearing to receive comment on Resilient Washtenaw Climate Action Plan for Washtenaw County. I hereby open the public hearing. Is there anybody wanting to make a comment on the climate action?
Thank you, Chair Schenk, the County Commission. I wasn't going to speak, but I think somebody should say something about this. It's a really impressive plan. I appreciate all the work that went into it. Uh, I have two questions. First, does the greenhouse gas inventory, starting on page thirty-four, and the plan's countywide estimate of four point four nine million metric ton CO2 equivalent emissions include scope three emissions? Scope three emissions are upstream supply chain emissions for businesses, institutions, and individuals, for goods, food, and travel. If not, we're underestimating countywide emissions. That's my first question. My second question is about strategy two, action one, on page eighty-seven, which calls for one hundred percent renewable energy options for everyone. The four pathways listed are community choice aggregation, community solar, sustainable energy utilities, and utility green pricing programs. The first two currently face legal barriers, sustainable energy utilities have limited scope, and utility green pricing programs are offsets that don't directly retire fossil fuel generation. My question is, why not put electric utility municipalization on the list? This is the process of converting the local for-profit electricity distribution network to public ownership. It's legal in Michigan for cities and villages, although not for townships. Unis have the ability to access clean power on the wholesale market. Chelsea, of course, has a well-run union, and there's an active municipalization campaign going on in Ann Arbor. Those are my two questions. I commend the authors of this plan and the impressive final product. Um, I think it's self-evident that this plan is written will not get us to carbon neutrality in twenty thirty-five. Um, I think Mr. Dill acknowledges this in the plan's introduction. He writes, quote, "To successfully meet our climate goals, the county will need to do more," end quote. Um, I would just add that we all need to do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please, for the record, state your name and your city or village? And then, um, if you can give the gentleman sitting next to you your contact information, he can follow up with you to answer your questions.
Yeah, my apologies for not identifying myself. Um, Ken Garber, I live in Ann Arbor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the public, or I'm sorry, on the climate action plan? Okay, I hereby close public hearing. Thank you. Next, I am looking for somebody to move the appointments. Okay, I am going to read the very extensive list of appointments that we as a board are making. These are the nominations that the Chair has made with the input of staff and commissioners. Agricultural Lands Preservation Advisory Committee, Daniel Cronin and Trilby McDonald. Board of Health, Danny Yordanich, Chris Frank, Elizabeth Vanderpool, Morgan Boydston, and Guadalupe Cervantes. Board of Public Works, Andrew Schmidt and Brian Weiner. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Sean White will serve the remainder term, and Kristi Mayer. Building Code Construction Board of Appeals, Edwin Gilbert, Jack Campbell, Ralph Adelman, Richard Mayernick, Charles Hookum, Dan Dill Zappo. Commission on Aging, Juliet Ballard, Marta Larson, Marie Grass, Margaret Reynolds, Elizabeth Thompson, Jennifer Green, Phyllis Hurstig, Jennifer Heckendorf, Brenda McKinney, and that leaves two uncholed positions. Community Action Board and Criminal Justice Collaborative Council, we're going to hold on those until the next term. Emergency Communications Millage, Mike Kennedy, who will serve the remainder term. Environmental Council, Gay McGregor, Tim Redmond, Lisa Wozniak, and Abney Rao. Food Policy Council, Marissa Priskant, Ava Fabercornholm, Anne Hubbard, Aubrey Lopatton, Laura Wong, Maya Grant, Mary Baylog, Lauren Markhart, Sandra Perneki, Markell Miller, Anna Taylor McCants, Damian Rivera. Historic District Commission, Elektra Rome. Two spots will be filled in the next term, um, which will be January. Huron River Watershed Council, Evan Pratt, Charles DeGryce, and Matthew Dawes. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Donald Detling, Mark Breckenridge, Joseph Jurassic, and Kimberly Cullum. Natural Areas Technical Advisory Committee, Catherine Rising, Robert Greasy, Anton Resnitchek, Katie Greenwald. Parks and Recreation Commission, Daniel Ezekiel and Patricia Scribner. Road Commission, Barbara Fuller. Social Services Board, one vacancy will be held till the next term. Veterans Affairs Committee, Joshua McAllister, and then Washtenaw County City of Ann Arbor Community Corrections Advisory Board, Neville Polansky. Looking for a motion?
No move.
Any discussion? Okay, um, and I think roll call vote.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yes.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Yeah.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Schenk.
Yes.
Appointment's passed.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda, so I'm looking for someone to move the consent agenda, please. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone against, please say nay. Next, I am looking for somebody to move the resolutions. We'll go with the final reading first. Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Chair. Resolutions, final reading, one, a, a resolution to accept the grant with the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development Bean Suite Project. Uh, one, be a resolution authorizing the application to the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Growth for the twenty twenty-three remonumentation program in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The, a resolution to authorize county administrator to apply for a Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy for a four hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollar grant to support brownfield activities for the two west Michigan avenue brownfield redevelopment projects in the city of Ypsilanti. Uh, D, a resolution approving positions to staff that previously supported financial men, top financial empowerment centers. E, a resolution approving the final partner, final recommendation of award recipients for RFP eight three eight five twenty twenty-two New Human Services Partnership Mini Grants. F, a resolution adopting the police services twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six cost price metrics as the agreed calculation for the total price of the police service unit. G, a resolution approving the twenty twenty-two third quarter general fund and non-general fund budget adjustments. H, a resolution to authorize the county administrator's signature on an agreement and declaration of the restrictive covenant relating to permissible activities at the service center located at Washtenaw Avenue and Hogback as they relate to soil and groundwater impacted by ExxonMobil contamination. I, a resolution accepting and adopting resilient Washtenaw Climate Action Plan for Washtenaw County. J, a resolution to approve funding recommendations for the community priority funds direct assistance to households category in the amount of one million dollars, and recommendations in addressing educational disparities is category in the amount of one million dollars. K, a resolution to encourage the well-being of COVID-nineteen impacted communities by investing in the engineering and planning, site acquisition, demolition, and/or construction and opera, opera, like I couldn't say that word last week either. What is wrong with me? Opera, operationalization, there it is, of a recreation center in the eastern region of Washtenaw County. L, a resolution approving the recommendations set forth by the new classification and compensation system to adjust the salaries of the nine Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners effective January first, twenty twenty-three. M, a resolution approving the reorganization of county administration.
Thank you. Anyone could. Thank you. Um, any that people would like to pull for separate consideration? Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Chair. E, that's the New Human Services Partnership.
Anyone else? Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Sanders?
Jay.
Commissioner LaBarre?
Uh, L, please.
Okay. Your aye? Anyone else? All right, Commissioner Machieski, do you have one? H, it's, we've now got H on the list. Corporation Council told me that. It's gonna take a fifteen. All right. All right, so we are going to take a roll call vote on all of those, or that's not true. Um, any discussion on those, we're not pulling for separate consideration. Okay, now we're going to take a roll call vote on those that we are not pulling for separate consideration.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yes.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Schenk.
Yeah.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Item's passed.
Thank you. Next, I'm, um, opening discussion on item E, a resolution approving the final recommendation of award recipients for the twenty twenty-two New Human Services Partnership Mini Grants. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I have a conflict with fed-up ministries, so when I vote on this, I'm abstaining from voting on that one, but I will be voting yes on all of it. But so Corp Counsel knows, we'll have that extension for that piece. March. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, so, uh, let's vote on item E. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yes.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Schenk.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. Uh, next, um, item H, the resolution to authorize the county administration's signature on an agreement and declaration of restrictive covenant relating to permissible activities at the service center located at Washtenaw Avenue and Hogback Road as they relate to soil and groundwater impacted by the ExxonMobil contamination. Commissioner Machieski?
Uh, so I can offer an amendment that is, uh, technical in nature that I think Corporation Counsel has worked to develop. Uh, so I would move to amend the ExxonMobil resolution to replace, that listed as H here, uh, to replace the previously included agreement and restrictive covenant with the revised versions as provided by Corporation Counsel.
Second? Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner LaBarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Schink?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Amendment passed.
Thank you. Next is item I, the Climate Action Plan. Commissioner Morgan, I believe that was one you had asked for?
It was. And actually, Peter can hand out a couple of small technical amendments, but that were important. So last meeting, we heard from some folks on labor who expressed that they supported the plan in principle and were really excited about it. However, there were, there was concern that there isn't a more explicit mention of labor as a partner in each portion of this plan. And so I spent the afternoon today having a conversation with some folks and realized that they were making some really good points about some fairly easy to make amendments. And so I will describe them, and then I would introduce one at a time. But I want to make sure that as we, we do this climate action plan, it's really exciting. It's a huge positive thing for us, but I want to make sure that we get it right in terms of being inclusive of labor in our community. And so, actually, if I could grab one of those, oh, here, it's on my computer. So I'll describe each one. So there are a whole bunch of different portions of this plan that will ultimately come back to the board. Under each one, it lists community partners. So it's like a business organization, townships, nonprofits, but it doesn't explicitly list labor in any of these. And so that was a concern in talking with Andrew Delu, who helped develop this plan, working with, I think Chip was here, and others are consultants. The intention is very clearly to include labor in all of this work that we're doing under the area of just transition, to make sure that we are becoming more sustainable. We are doing that in a just way. So the request was, and I think it's actually a good one, was simply to include labor as a community partner for all the actions that list just transition as a principle, because that is the intention, but I think folks will feel better if we explicitly mention that, and that is why I'm suggesting this as an amendment. The other two amendments that I'll suggest are very, basically on that same premise. So the second one, we have a, a portion of this that suggests creating a regional resiliency authority, and one of the things that was not listed was labor, but what was listed was local units of government, nonprofits, key county employers. The intention again is to say, we're doing this work, we're obviously going to include labor voices in that discussion as it gets developed more thoroughly and comes back to this board for approval. But there is a concern that we weren't explicitly mentioning, hey, we're going to also talk to labor about how we do this, because a lot of the work that we're doing around sustainability should absolutely include labor as we're, you know, putting on solar panels, we're developing a regional resiliency authority, as we're, you know, ensuring more sustainable transportation. Obviously, those things all include labor. And again, I want to stress, the intention was that that would be included, but it wasn't explicitly stated. And then the last one was related to, there's a portion of the report that suggests creating a countywide energy concierge with goals and evaluation metrics. And, and the, one of the things that it suggested, developing a database of service providers, contracts, product types. And so there's a request, we also include, we are basically giving suggestions of these providers, that we also include if they are labor, union, or non-union providers and contractors, and whether they pay a living wage. As we've talked about a lot around this board table, particularly through the, the, responsible contractor policy and some other things that we've done, that is the intention is to basically be inclusive of labor as we do our work. So that's the, the spirit behind all three of these. None of them make any significant changes to the work, because this was the intention, but there was concern that we heard two weeks ago that we weren't explicitly saying it and making it clear, because in very few places in our report did it explicitly say labor, even though it's intended under the idea of just transition. So that's a long-winded background. I have talked to Andrew about this. He did not, he expressed, he didn't see any major concerns with this at all. So it's a bit wonky to be suggesting this, but I want to make sure that as we do this really big and exciting thing, we're doing it in partnership with folks in our community who have passionate and strong feelings about this, as many of us do. So with that said, I propose to amend the Washtenaw County Climate Action Plan to list labor as a community partner for all of the actions that, that list, let me say explicitly, to amend the portion of the plan under implementation areas to list labor as a community partner for all actions that list just transition as a principle.
Second, report. Any discussion on the amendment? I'll just say, last week, Commissioner Hodge and I met with a labor representative and had a good conversation about those items, and I, I feel like I can support this. Okay, then I think we are ready for a vote on the amendment. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schink?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar? Amendment passed.
Thank you. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Commissioner Morgan?
Sure, just two more amendments here, but I wanted to break them up so it's not overly confused. So the second amendment, as you see in front of you, says to amend, I know it's very technical in a like hundred-page report, but amend the section 1.02, under the area of creating a regional resilience authority description to read, Washtenaw County will bring together common interests among the 28 units of government, nonprofits, local/regional labor leadership, and key county employers to explore collaborative solutions that scale significant carbon reduction projects and leverage funds across partners to reduce implementation costs and staff burden. That is my amended motion.
Any discuss, oh, is there support? Support? Any discussion? Commissioner Machieski?
Just a question regarding the word leadership. None of the other sectors that are mentioned here have leadership attached to them, and was wondering if it might actually be more inclusive just to not use the word leadership and just say local, regional labor, or maybe representatives instead of just leadership?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment to just drop the word leadership. If my support. Thank you.
Corporation Counsel said that we could vote on the two amendments at the same time.
Oh, good, okay. So if there's no concerns in that one, the third amendment, do I need to read it if it's right in front of us? I can just read it.
I think it's helpful because it's short.
Okay, so this amends implementation section 2.02, countywide energy concierge, goals and evaluation metrics, third bullet, to say, develop database of service providers, contracts, and product types, including information on whether these are union or non-union providers and contractors, and whether a living wage is paid in the case of non-union providers.
Your report? Report? Any discussion on that? Commissioner Labar?
Real quick, Commissioner Morgan, how are we defining living wage? Is that in accordance with our own ordinance, or is that some other metric?
That would, that was my assumption in using that language, because we already had a definition for living wage in the county, but I could clarify that if that is helpful.
I'm, I'm fine with it as is, I just wanted to know. Thanks.
You could amend the language to say whether the county's living wage ordinance is complied with by the non-union providers?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment from Commissioner Labar.
I consent to allow that amendment.
Commissioner, hi?
I was just going to suggest that we friendly, if you, Commissioner Morgan was open to a friendly amendment.
All right, great. All right, any discussion on that? I think we've got it. Mr. Mulkey, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schink?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Amendments passed.
Thank you. Now we are going to, we're moving on to the resolution as amended, so does anybody have any comments on the resolution to approve the Climate Action Plan as amended? Mr. Morgan?
Very true, I promise this is the only topic.
I'm happy to hear your comments.
I plan on talking on. Listen, you have to, one more meeting, put it up with me. I, I just want to say, thank you for, for making those, those edits to it. I think it's a much more inclusive document, including those edits. I always want to make sure that we're incorporating concerns from the community if we, if we can reasonably accommodate them, and I think these were good, good changes to make. But I did just want to comment on the Climate Action Plan itself, and what an incredible thing this is. This Climate Action Plan is the boldest action we've ever taken as a county to address climate change and, and reduce our carbon output. It is an incredible effort by all of us here in supporting this, this plan. And I, I just have to say, it's something that I, I wasn't sure if we would ever get to this point as a, as a county and as a board. And so I certainly have incredible appreciation to Andrew Delu for, for leading this work as, as our staff person, heading that work up, and to Greg for, for handing it to Andrew, which was a great move, and to supporting that work all along. You know, Greg, you and I had a lot of conversations about this and, and how important it was, and, and I know that you, you've shared for years that we would get there, and, and you really, we are getting there under your leadership, and, and so I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. Six years ago, I, I heard a county commissioner, I was just recently elected or near then, I heard a county commissioner in public say, we're going to get to carbon neutral as Washtenaw County, and I was excited, and I said, oh my gosh, this is great, how are we going to do it? And they said to me, well, I don't know how we're going to get there, but it sounds great to have a goal. And I said, what? I said, that doesn't make any sense. If you're going to proclaim a bold statement, you should have a plan to back that up. Little did I know, over the last few years, how hard it is to develop a plan to back up a bold statement like that. And so we've done a lot of work around declaring a climate emergency, around setting a goal of climate, carbon neutral by 2030 and 2035 for the community, and I think we've been very intentional about trying to be realistic and aspirational at the same time. And, and that is just something that I think this plan does. I want to really stress that this is just a small part of the long journey that it will take for us to really get to carbon neutral as a county government and county community. A lot of this will come back to those of you who are, who are still on the board. So we're approving a framework tonight, but the, the true implementation rests with all of you who will be here when some of us are gone, and making sure that we are, are doing this in an inclusive way, in a way that is social and environmentally just, and that that really makes sure that everyone is, is pulled along together as we work toward a more sustainable community. And I just cannot stress enough, as our report says, climate change is among the defining issues of our time. How big of a step this is, and how important it is for us to create a more resilient and sustainable future for, I mean, some of us are, for some of us who might be around for a while, and, and some of our children and grandchildren, and really everyone who we want to have a, a really good future for. So I'll leave it there in just saying that this is something I'm really proud of as a commissioner here in Washtenaw County, leaving this board, knowing that this work is moving forward, and that we are going to partner with all of our local units of government and our community to continue moving that forward in a positive direction. So thank you all for that support and every step of the way, and, and keeping it moving long after I'm no longer here with you. So thank you so much. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. So I have, I was going to say some things, and I think I'll start off by saying what Commissioner Morgan said. And then, and I'll add on, as I came into being a commissioner, getting a climate action plan enacted was one of my major goal. And I didn't know how, how we would get there, and I, I came in, and there, there wasn't a plan, but there was kind of a plan to plan, and set about working very closely with Commissioner Morgan, and then also getting to know some of the staff who were maybe already working on it, and, and there were people already working on it, and April Baronic was one of the people who was already working on it, and she's played a really pivotal role in getting us to where we are today. And, and we had help from the people who came on to the Environmental Council, many of whom are still there, most of whom are still participating, and Missy Stoltz from the city of Ann Arbor. And I will say that the city of Ann Arbor has been an incredible partner in helping us to get to where we are today. And then there's another organization that we subscribe to, ICLI, which is a, an organization that has developed to support the work of local governments, because they recognize that the, the, the national governments were not going to be able to do it on their own, that they have so many pressures on them, and there's oftentimes a lack of will that is left to the locals to get the real work done. And so it's, it's been an important process in, in my development, as somebody who, who cares about the community and wants to get things done, to work through understanding who in this organization was already working on it, and many people were already working on these issues before I ever got here, and before we ever started calling it Climate Action Plan. So Washtenaw County's been working for many years to reduce its carbon footprint. And also want to recognize Jason Key, who is out there in the audience for his work on this. And, and then also, it took, it took leadership, not just the commissioners, but also our administrator who has supported this work, and who worked with us to find ways to raise the awareness and the skill level of people within the organization so that eventually we came to a point where we had a real plan to plan, and we could put out an RFP, and we could find the money to pay for it, and all the commissioners could come around and support it. And I'm just so grateful to everybody, because we really did it, and we did it fast, and, and it's a plan that has enough, enough breadth and enough places where the whole community can participate, that we as a community can use it as a community building tool, even as we use it as a tool to make our community a safer place for people to live well into the future. And, and this was really underlined for me, not this summer, or somewhere before, when we had to declare a climate emergency because a number of people got flooded out of their homes. A lot of those people were in Commissioner Jefferson's district and Commissioner Sanders' district, and climatologists said this was a result of, of climate change. And so we know that we're suffering these, these effects here, we're suffering them now, and, and we've got to do everything we can as fast as we can. And I just want to remind everybody, county government doesn't make anybody do anything. We make it easier for people to do the right thing, and this Climate Action Plan is just full of that. And, and when we talk about our community partners, it's so reflective of the way we do business as a county, and I'm really proud of the work that, that we've all done, and especially the work that Andrew Delu has done to make this happen. It's really incredible, and it's just been a pleasure to work with you on it. So thank you. And of course, I am going to be voting yes on this one. All right, it's time to call the roll. Mr. Mulkey?
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schink?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
amended item passed.
Thank you. We need to go back to item H and vote on it as amended. Item H is the item that concerns the property with the, the contamination by Exxon. So Mr. Mulkey, will you call the roll for the item as amended?
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schink?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
amended item passed.
Thank you. Next, we have item J, resolution to approve funding recommendations for the community priority fund, direct assistance to households category, and, and addressing educational disparities category. Who has for separate consideration of that, please? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. I'm abstaining.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Mulkey, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shink?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar? Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Abstaining. All right, great. Thank you. Next, we have item L, Resolution to Approve the Recommendations Set forth by the New Classification and Compensation System to Address the salaries of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners effective January 1, 2023. Commissioner Labar, that was you?
Thanks, Chair. I would like to offer an amendment that I think tries to capture both the substance of the tone of the discussion at the last meeting on this. And so, I'd move to amend the current resolution. And Pete is handing out the document here to stagger implementation, starting in quarters 1 and 2 of 2023 and then phasing in through quarters 3 and 4 of 2024, starting at 28,454 and ending at 3196. That would bring us initially at the minimum of the MAGG recommendation and then a 2% increase adjustment every six months, which is in line with roughly what the rest of the organization is receiving. So, I'd move that.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? They were going to be voting, sorry, voting on the amendment?
Commissioner Shink?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
No.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
Oh.
Item passed or amendment passed, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Next will be, is there any discussion on the item as amended? All right, we'll be voting on the item as amended. Mr. Mulkey, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Beaman?
No.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
No.
Commissioner Labar?
Yes.
Commissioner Machieski?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
No.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
Commissioner Shink?
Yeah.
Item failed.
Okay. Then, next, I'm looking for somebody to make a motion for the single reading resolutions. Commissioner Scott?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Two, A, Resolution Ratifying the Grant Application for the Department of Justice Family-Based Alternative Sentencing Program, Approving Receipt of DOJ Family-Based Alternative Sentencing Program Grant Award Fiscally Year 2022 to '25, and Approving the Budget. B, A, Resolution to Authorize the County Administrator to Apply for a $25,000 grant from the Certified Local Government Grant Program from the State of Michigan Historic Preservation Office for Northfield Township. C, A Resolution Ratifying the Signature of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners on the Grant Application of the State of Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning for the Continuation of the Sheriff's Department Secondary Road Patrol Program in the Amount of $307,330 for the Period of October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023. D, A Resolution Approving the Electronic Submission of the Grant Application and Agreement for the Strategic Traffic Reinforcement Program in the Amount of $129,291 with the State of Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning for the Period of October 1, 2022 to September 30, 2023, authorizing the County Administrator to sign the Notice of Grant Award, amending the budget and authorizing the Administrator to sign delegate contracts. E, A Resolution Authorizing the Application of the Michigan Department of State for the Help America Vote Election Security Grant in the Amount of $22,650. F, A Resolution Adopting the 2023 Annual Calendar for the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. G, A Resolution Rescinding the Employee COVID Vaccination Requirement. H, A Resolution Approving an Agreement with Ask Me Local 3052 for the Period of January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, and Authorizing that the Chair of the Board of Commissioners sign this agreement. A Resolution, I, A Resolution Recognizing Coach Sandy Sanders for his 40 years of service to Washtenaw County as a basketball coach, mentor, and community leader. J, A Resolution Honoring Stephanie Thacker for 34 years of service to Washtenaw County. K, A Resolution Honoring Diane Height for her 29 years of service to Washtenaw County. L, A Resolution Honoring Commissioner Ricky Jefferson for his service as a member of the Board of Commissioners. M, A Resolution Honoring Commissioner Jason Morgan for his service as a member of the Board of Commissioners. N, A Resolution Honoring Commissioner Shink for her service as a member of the Board of Commissioners. O, A Supplemental, A Resolution Reaffirming the Support of the Board of Commissioners for the Continued Allocation of Additional Resources to Support the Implementation of the Countywide Classification and Compensation Program. And then, three, Approval of Claims.
Do we have, I'm sorry, yeah, a second. Hey, anybody want to pull anything out separately?
Chair, do we usually do the resolutions separately? I don't know the history. Maybe it's a Greg question. Do we usually pull the resolutions for the outgoing?
I don't remember.
Yes.
I was going to, okay.
I'll pull those then.
Okay, thank you. I need to pull item B because I need to abstain from that when I'm on the board of the Northfield Township Historical Society.
I would like to pull the item on the vaccine.
Which is what letter? I need to make a list here.
It is.
G.
Okay, what do you want to pull?
B.
G.
B.
G.
B?
Yes, yeah, item G.
Me too. Anything else? Commissioner Hodge?
Oh, because I think it's worth us discussing the supplemental just so people are clear.
That's almost all of them, but we have a few that aren't. Any others? Commissioner Sanders?
We're talking resolutions?
Yeah.
Yep.
M and N.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Mr., well, any discussion on those resolutions that we haven't pulled separately? Probably not. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar?
Yeah.
Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yeah.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shink?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Items passed.
Thank you. For item B, that's one I asked to be pulled. I am on the board of the Historical Society, so I'm going to abstain. With that, Mr. Mulkey, could you, is there any other discussion on that item? Could you please call the roll, Mr. Mulkey?
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Commissioner Labar? Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah.
Commissioner Shink?
Yes.
Or you can abstain.
Sorry, just trying to go in order. Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. Item G?
I guess I, I'll just leave it at, I'm voting no on this. I don't think we should be rescinding the vaccine mandate at the county. I think, in fact, we should be implementing it and we have not done that yet. So, I do not support rescinding it. I would rather support implementation and enforcement of it. I think at this point, we should have a basic expectation that folks working at an entity that provides public health services should receive the COVID-19 vaccine to ensure that both themselves, their coworkers, and the people we serve are protected and safe as best as possible. I'll leave it at that and just say that I will be voting no on this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Chair. I will join Commissioner Morgan in a no vote on this. It is really clear from public health around the world how vaccines on a number of communicable diseases have saved people and how vaccines have eased some of the burden of what we have experienced in this country with COVID. I think it's unfortunate if we rescind the vaccine. I think anybody in a public facing position should have a vaccine to protect not only themselves, but the people that they serve. I think it's a matter of altruism and a compact we make for living in community and working together. I will also join Commissioner Morgan again in voting no. Thank you.
Do you have anyone else, any other comments? Okay, with that, Mr. Mulkey, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Labar? Commissioner Machieski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Sanders?
No.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Shink?
Yeah.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. Item K, A Resolution Honoring Diane Height for 29 years of service to Washtenaw County. I'm going to get up and walk down here. Hi, I can't believe I'm standing here with you tonight. Whereas Diane Height began her employment with Washtenaw County in 1993 and is retiring after 29 years of dedicated public service. Diane joined Washtenaw County in the Human Resources Department as an HR Generalist and served as interim Labor Relations Manager in 1996, was promoted to Labor Relations Human Resources Manager in 1998, and then was elevated to the role of Executive Director of Human Resources in 2007 and has been an active member of the Voluntary Employees Beneficiary Association, VIBA, serving as Chair from 2007 to 2021. You want to come stand here too? And she held the temporary assignment of co-deputy county administrator in 2015 and was elevated to the role of deputy administrator in 2017, serving as second-in-command, helping to lead Washtenaw County's 1,400-plus employees and has worked tirelessly to support the organization, collaborating with the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, county administration, departments, and employees to make Washtenaw County a competitive and premier employer sought by professionals at every level experienced and has demonstrated a strong commitment to the vision and values of Washtenaw County, helping to provide the necessary knowledge, skills, and resources to county employees to carry out our mission and has led countless critical projects for the county, including successful negotiation and ratification of labor agreements, jobs and gobs of them, and most recently, the implementation of a new classification and compensation structure for the whole of the county. You are well-respected by staff and peers and you have dedicated your entire career to the service of Washtenaw County residents. And it's not a resolution, but when I became a commissioner, you were so warm and welcoming to me. It just made everything easier and we are just so pleased and honored to be able to honor you. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Dill and go sit down for a moment.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for honoring this just exemplary employee of Washtenaw County. We talk a lot about the nobility of public service and I believe that there's no finer example of that than Diane Height. I will say that we have had several meetings today and at every meeting, I've taken the opportunity to say how grateful that I am for her leadership and her commitment to the nobility of public service. I'd also like to add that over the last 20-plus years that I've been in this room, the times that I've gotten in the most trouble have been the times when I've stood or sat next to Diane Height. So, I will fondly remember those times. We had great laughter in this room. We dealt with some very difficult decisions and we've tried to help craft policy that changes the lives of the residents of Washtenaw County. And I am so grateful for having you alongside me during this journey. Thank you very much.
Well, Andy, Commissioner Labar, I guess you didn't need to actually say anything. I just want to thank everybody here. This has been a great journey for me. Never thought I'd be here. I said earlier today at the gathering out front, I never thought I'd be here for 29 and a half years. I started at the University of Michigan, worked there as a computer consultant and then came to Washtenaw County and thought, "Okay, I'll just do a little, a couple of years there." And it has been the most humbling and rewarding experiences of my life to be, to have worked for Washtenaw County. The staff are unbelievable, the departments, the leadership in this county, the citizens, the people that we have the honor to serve are incredible and I'm very proud to be a part of that. So, I thank you all for your support and I'm only a mile and a half up the road, so you'll probably see me more afterwards. So, thank you.
Commissioners, anyone who would like to say a few words? Go ahead, Commissioner Labar.
Thanks, Chair. I think there's a reason why Diane probably had a little bit of trouble getting through those remarks. And I think that speaks to someone who has a palpable commitment to their team. Diane came up in this organization. One of her mentors was our past administrator, Verna McDaniel. And I think Diane, day in and day out, took those lessons that Verna provided her and those that came before Verna to her. And she put them to work and she put them to work in a thousand different ways that we will never know about and that we will never have a concept of their scope and impact. And I was trying to think what I could say that would be sufficient to meet the moment. Diane, I'd just say, I wish we held in our minds the idea of growing up to be a public servant like you, of growing up to be someone committed to the organization, the people you serve, someone who lives and breathes it and someone who has remarkable grace in moments of incredible tension and someone who I've never seen in 10 years that I've had the fortune to see and yep, close, never seen you convey emotion in terms of delivering what needed to be said. I've seen intensity. I've seen appropriate response to the context. But never any, never any injection of what Diane thought, but rather, what does Diane Height, the consummate professional, think? And what does she need to tell us to do our best job in the moment? That is one hell of a skill set. And Diane, I may not read, I may not read, you know, a biography that you write, but I will remember you in a thousand little moments and ways when I look around this building, when I look at what this organization does. Because you have put your imprint on it and you have put your ethos of public service into it. And so, I'd just say, Diane, we will miss you. We thank you. And you leave such a great example behind in terms of what makes this a great organization and what makes it a place where people want to be for their career. So, I'd just say, Diane, thank you. So I just say, Diane, thank you. I wish you nothing but goodness ahead, and I'm really grateful to you as a public servant. Thank you.
Other Commissioners? Again, thank you so much for all that you've done for Washtenaw County and for me personally, as somebody who is serving Washtenaw County, to make it easier for me to do that, because a lot of what I did could not have done without you. Okay, so we are ready to vote. We'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Schink.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Item passed.
Thank you. Next, it is my honor to present a resolution honoring Commissioner Ricky Jefferson for his service as a member of the Board of Commissioners. So let's go up to the podium. Whereas Ricky Jefferson was first elected by the people of the City of Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Township and Superior Township to represent District 6 on the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners in 2016, followed by two re-elections, ultimately serving on the board from 2017 to 2022. And prior to joining the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Jefferson was an elected member of the City Council for the City of Ypsilanti from 2010 to 2014. And Commissioner Jefferson is a lifelong resident of Washtenaw County, and his family has and continues to have strong roots in this community. In addition to his career as a public servant, Commissioner Jefferson is a proud retired employee of the former GMC Willow Run Power Train Plant, where he worked for 32 years. And as a Commissioner, Commissioner Jefferson has served as Vice Chair of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners during the difficult time where our county faced substantial challenges, including the onset of COVID-19 pandemic. And Commissioner Jefferson has also championed initiatives to increase access to services and resources on the east side of the county, such as supporting the creation of the Racial Equity Office, participating in the development of a new model to support human service providers in our community, being a constant champion for the creation of an Eastern County Rec Center, advocating for equitable access to COVID-19 resources, and so much more. Commissioner Jefferson has ably represented his constituents in the county on a number of important groups, including Parks and Recreation Commission, Community Mental Health Board, the Community Action Board, the Substance Use Disorder Oversight Policy Board, and the Southeast Michigan Council of Government, among others. And Commissioner Jefferson has also participated in community events, such as being a member of the Friends of Rutherford Pool, the Joe Doolin Day Park Ridge Summer Festival, sorry, Festival Committee, and the Association of African-American Contractors of Washtenaw County. The Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes, honors, and expresses its most sincere appreciation to you for your service to Washtenaw County. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Board of Commissioners, I guess I don't have to write down all the things. You got pretty much everything on here. And I don't know how I worked 13 years at power trade. I'm only 34. So I don't know where you got that from. But thank you so much, Chair Schink, and Mr. Labar, and Katie Scott, and Jason Morgan. We all have been here a little longer than any others. The things that we've accomplished, that we set as priorities and set as goals, those things have really come to fruition, and it's been a great time in my life to work as a Commissioner in the county, which my great-grandfather came here in 1920. My mother was one that made sure that I understood what was going on in government, and not that I was trying to be in government. State Rep. Roddy Peterson used to follow me when I retired. You know, you get enough time, people want to tell you what to do with your time. So he said that you want to run for city council. Now, of course, I was already helping people in the community as a minister, and he saw that I was really concerned about people. And I said, yes, what does it take? He said, two meetings a month. And that turned out to be not true. But what happened is, I learned to love this type of work, the type of people that I work with, and the kind of help that we can give people in these seats is powerful. To be a part of the highest elected officials in the county, it's a powerful thing, and it's something that I treasure for the rest of my life. I didn't plan to be here. I'm telling you, what I was trying to do was retire and take care of my 20 grandchildren, my five daughters. So now, I know I'm gonna find something that's gonna keep me awake all night again, because that's just my nature. But I'm not gonna miss staying awake, thinking about some of the things that you guys are gonna have to deal with. But I will keep my eye on it, because it's a passion of mine that I'll never forget, continue to work on in my community. So thank you so much for this proclamation. Thank you Administrator Dill. Diane, you've just been so kind and so considerate, as Commissioner Labar said, the way that you deal with things. I know I've given you some frustrating moments, but you were so calm through them all, and I appreciate your work, and thank you all, and the staff, and the amazing staff that we really have here at the county. Thank you so much. 1,400, as Administrator Dill calls them. Continue to do the work for our constituents and make sure that you keep the people first. Thank you.
Mr. Mel, oh, other comments? Commissioner Machieski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Jefferson, wish you the best as you move forward in your next adventure. I'm glad to see that I'm not, or hear that I'm not the only person who was told it was just two meetings a month. Trick people use, apparently. But I've always been struck by your dedication to community and the passion for which you have for fighting for residents of your district. I think it's something we all have, but you wear it on your sleeve. I greatly respect that. Yeah, I think we all try and make a difference here at the county commission, regardless of how much time we have here. And I certainly believe that you've done that, and have the best interest of not only the residents of your district, but the county as a whole, it hurt. So I've appreciated sitting next to you for the last four years, and wish you the best going forward.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you Chair. So much I'd love to say, I will, I will sort of just say this. I think Ricky, you've, feels like we've been on this board for like 12 years. It's been six. And the things that we've seen, the things that we've worked through, and I just have just really grown to appreciate your perspective on things in the community, the way you approach things. I think we've both learned and grown together in this work and how we do it and how we work together. And I think above all else, I think we always know your passion for public service and the work that you're doing. It was really a wild couple of years as Chair with you as the Vice Chair. We had a lot of big things on our plate, including the pandemic, and some things I'll talk about in my comments here shortly, but just want to say, thank you for your work. I have so much respect for you and appreciation, and we'll just always feel that partnership long after we're at this board table. Thank you. Thanks Chair.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Jefferson, Ricky, I'll be quick, but I just want to say it has been a pleasure serving on this board with you. It was fantastic to be in leadership with you all those hours sitting in the basement in one of our not-two meetings a month. And I just want to note some things about you too that I've noticed beyond your service at this table. You have a strong commitment to your family, and I can sense that in you all the time. I think that that commitment you have to your family is how you approach the community also, the community as a broader part of your family. And I just want to say like that you referenced your mom tonight. God bless her for bringing that awareness to you. And I love that you remembered her in those remarks. It brings a little tear to my eye, and I think that that's really fantastic. I think that it is no mistake that you're wearing purple as a regal color tonight and showing your grace here at this meeting tonight, and thank you for your service here. I look forward to what somebody's gonna talk you into doing next and see where your time will go, but thank you for your commitment to Washtenaw County, to your family, to your faith, and to the whole community. Thank you. Thank you.
Others? Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Jefferson, much has been said about your commitment and passion for the community, and so I won't say more about that. What I will say is what Commissioner Scott started, your commitment to style. So one thing I always wonder, what is Ricky gonna be wearing? Because you know, sometimes I want to outdo you, but today, you've got it. The purple, the pocket square, you have outdone us today. So I'm gonna really, you know, miss that, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you around.
Commissioner Labar?
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Jefferson, I too aspire to mimic your style. I don't think that will happen, but I just want to say, in 2020, we were trying our best at this table, as so many other tables around the country were trying, as elected officials, to grapple, obviously, with COVID, but also certainly with the underlying issues of injustice in policing in the context of Black Americans. And that was most visceral with George Floyd. And the reason I bring this up is just because I remember several times that summer, being struck at your willingness during candidly a time when we didn't know what we didn't know, and we didn't know exactly what it was to be safe or to be distanced. Commissioner, you were always out there in the community, and I don't mean that in the rhetorical way. You were pressing the flesh. You were with people. You were hearing their concerns, both the substance and the tone of it. And that shouldn't go unnoticed. I think you put in a diligent amount of work being present in the room, and thank you for that. Because it's good for people to see their elected officials there, and I think it's something special to see them, particularly in those times where it's easy to say, I can't make it. It's easy to say, I'm with you, but I'm not gonna be there with you. You did. And I also just want to say, I've really appreciated the perspective you brought to community mental health. Having you there has been very helpful in terms of understanding what it is for those services to go out and hit the individual, but also, how is their family impacted, and what is the lived experience of receiving it? Too often, I isolate it in my mind as sort of an academic equation. And you have spoken to that experience in a way that is useful both for policymakers, but most importantly, as an advocate for the people getting the service. And Ricky, I know you're a man of faith. I know it manifests itself in different ways in your life, and it motivates you. I guess I would just say, well done. Good and faithful service for your community. Thank you. And whether it be the 20 grandkids, the five dogs, or whatever's next, I wish you happiness, Ricky. I wish you happiness.
Commissioner Beaman?
Thank you Chair. I'll keep it brief. Everyone said such wonderful things, but the one thing I would like to say to you, Commissioner Jefferson, is I want to thank you for pushing us. There's a quote that I love that says, "It takes a great deal of bravery to stand up to your enemies, but more so to stand up to your friends," and you pushed us. And for that, I am always grateful. It's not easy to be that no at the table. It's not easy to be that voice of dissent. And you've always had reason and passion and purpose behind that, and so I'm very appreciative for your leadership and your friendship. So thank you.
Anyone else? So thank you again. Thank you for sharing your wisdom with me and welcoming me into the board when I was a new Commissioner, and it was a pleasure to work with you on leadership. Those were a lot more than two meetings a week. And I've also seen you out in the community during some tough times, a lot of protests, where you were a very steadying force and a guiding, and a guiding presence, and that was really important at that time. And that was during a time where we didn't, we weren't vaccinated, and so, but it was important to be there, and you were there. And then all the community events, I know I've seen you at many, and you've been to many where I haven't been. So I'm guessing that you spend quite a bit of time. And that's just, is wonderful. The community needs that. And so, thank you, and it's been, it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you, and I hope that we will stay in touch as well. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote then.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Schink.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. The next item, item M, appropriately lettered, is a resolution honoring Commissioner Jason Morgan for his service as a member of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas Jason Morgan was first elected by the people of the City of Ann Arbor to represent District 8 on the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners in 2016, followed by two re-elections, ultimately serving on the board from 2017 to 22. And prior to joining the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Morgan has been involved in public service in a number of capacities, including as District Director for Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, Advisor to Congresswoman Haley Stevens, Constituent Services Director for Michigan Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson, Transition Director for Congresswoman Alyssa Slotkin. And in addition to his political career, Commissioner Morgan is a part-time instructor at Washtenaw County Community College, a member of the Northern Michigan University Board of Trustees, and a member of the United States Post Guard Auxiliary. And from 2019 to 2020, Commissioner Morgan served as the Chair of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, making him the first openly LGBTQ Chair of the Commission, and he also served as Chair of Working Session from 2017 to 2018, and I will add, provided great leadership. Whereas during his tenure as County Commissioner, Commissioner Morgan has championed initiatives related to taking bold climate action, supporting county health and human services, advancing policies that promote equity inclusion for all county residents, and beginning to address historic inequities related to housing and economic opportunity. He has represented his constituents in the county and a number of important groups, including the Environmental Council, Urban County Executive Committee, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the Criminal Justice Collaborative Council, the Emergency Medical Services Commission, Washtenaw Area Transportation Council, and was the first liaison to the Washtenaw County Youth Commission, which probably would not exist without his efforts. On November 8th of 2022, Jason Morgan was elected with more than 65% of the vote to serve as representative for the 23rd District of the Michigan House of Representatives. And as a member of the Michigan House of Representatives, Representative-elect Morgan will serve the state of Michigan by representing Washtenaw County constituents in the City of Ann Arbor, the Townships of Ann Arbor, Superior in Salem, as well as portions of Oakland County. And with his election to the Michigan House of Representatives, Jason Morgan will leave the County Board of Commissioners at the conclusion- Jason Morgan will leave the County Board of Commissioners at the conclusion of this term. And so we, the County, County Board of Commissioners, recognize, honor, and express our most sincere appreciation at the conclusion of this term. Oh, I'm sorry, I was missing a sentence, which is pretty normal when I'm talking to Jason. I always give him a good opportunity to laugh. But anyway, um, we're really glad to be able to work with you and appreciate the leadership and all that you have given to this county. Here you go.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I, um, well, it's the last. You're gonna have to hear from me here. Uh, so you're welcome. Uh, a- as you know, uh, I always have opinions on things and I generally share them. Uh, you'd be surprised at the times that I haven't shared my thoughts on things. But uh, I just want to say, um, serving on this board for the last six years has, has truly been an honor. Um, serving with you all, I, all of you as commissioners and and colleagues, uh, as the staff. Um, certainly, um, I feel like we've spent a lot of long nights here, uh, and and um, have taken on some really big challenges in our community and some really great opportunities. Um, but I also really appreciate Diane. I was gonna speak earlier, but I, I just couldn't figure out the words to say to tell you how much I appreciate you. Diane has been such a truly steady and incredible rock here for so long. And just, I just gotta say, every time I walk into this building and see Diane smile, I, I can't help but feel happy. Um, and so certainly Diane, Greg, uh, has put up with me, uh, for all of these years, uh, for better or worse. Um, but most importantly, uh, I think the, the true test of a friendship is when you can disagree and have different ideas and things and work together on really great things, uh, and through it all, uh, really maintain respect and trust and and appreciation for each other. And and I really appreciate Greg's leadership at this county. Uh, it is, we've seen a lot, as we all know, in the last few years, and I just don't know where we would otherwise be. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, Peter, thank you. And so saying that you're leaving us as well, uh, three of us, Sue and Ricky, and uh, three of us leaving on the board and and also having Peter leave at the same time. I guess he couldn't be here without us. But just thank you. Uh, there, we've thrown a lot at Peter and at Andrew and and so many on staff for the last few years that it, um, I just can't believe how much we've been able to do. Uh, with that, I do just want to note, uh, when I started on the board, we had a, uh, actually even shortly after I started on the board, we had a CMH budget deficit that we worked through. Uh, it was so difficult that, uh, this was shortly after I was elected as Chair, that I kept trying to work in a day job in Lansing and kept ending up encountering just so much heavy work here that I, I quit. And I said, I can't do this. I can't work in Lansing and do this work here. And I knew I had to make a choice of do I serve as Chair and do I make sure that we're doing what we need to at the county? Um, to make sure that we're protecting mental health and our employees and and the county government as a whole. And I just kept coming back to the idea of public service and and that being more important. Uh, the Youth Commission has been one of my, my proudest achievements and accomplishments as a commissioner. Um, there, I generally say everything we do here, we've done together, and I do feel that way about everything. Uh, the Youth Commission, I will, uh, claim a tiny portion of as my, my pride and joy, uh, because it has been such an incredible, um, thing to watch. As we all see the young people come in, uh, once or twice a year, you just see a, a level of enthusiasm and joy that is is unparalleled. And I'm really excited about the day when somebody joins this board after serving on a youth commission sometime ten or fifteen years earlier, uh, or maybe two or three years earlier. I don't know if you've met some of those youth commissioners, but uh, it's not long. Uh, they are incredible. Um, the carbon, uh, the Climate Action Plan tonight was, uh, something we all set out to do a number of years ago. This list I'm reading off, um, for those, I think we all remember, we set a, a calendar of deliverables. We said, these are our priorities as a board. And so when I'm talking about these things, these are things that we all said, these are our priorities collectively and together. And the way I took that as commissioner was, every single one of these priorities, because they are priority for somebody on this board, are also my priorities of things that I care deeply about getting done. Uh, so that Climate Action Plan, establishing an Eastside Rec Center, we've been talking about that for years. That is something that we all worked really, really hard and and we had folks lead and and take the lead on those things. But uh, it's always been a collective effort. Uh, the Gelman Dioxin Plume, I don't know how many of us remember the hours and hours and hours of meetings we spent on that. And I think we've made some really positive act, uh, taken some very positive action on it. We'll see what happens in the future, but uh, we have more work to do. Um, I could go on and on, but I guess I, I want to say, we've set out with some really big goals as, as this county, and we've achieved so many of them. And there are new and and more exciting challenges on the horizon that I hope that you all continue to tackle in the way that we've done, uh, so far. Uh, that you'll approach it with an eye toward public service, good government, uh, integrity, and and making sure that, um, we are, we're truly serving the residents of Washtenaw County. That we're being passionate, we're asking lots of questions. Somebody's gonna have a, have to ask lots of questions once I'm gone, uh, because it won't be me anymore. Um, and and to challenge each other. Uh, the reason we feel passionately about things and we have tensions sometimes is, is usually because we're doing something big or historic or monumental, or that is going to directly impact the lives of our residents in a pretty profound way. Those should not always be easy conversations. Sometimes those are really hard conversations. Uh, and so I encourage us to continue to do that moving forward. And the last thing I'll say is to do that work with love and and passion. Um, I, I certainly have, have, we've all had lots of, uh, very intense days around here. But what I have felt at this board through the years, uh, is a sense of love and respect and appreciation for one another. Uh, maybe not always, uh, at every single moment, but in the long run, uh, we have all conveyed that. And I just hope that we'll continue to do that, that we'll work together. And um, thank you all. I look forward to continuing to serve and work with you.
Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Matjeski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first off, I look forward to being the old Jason on the county commission. These, and Jason M, yeah. Uh, you know, uh, Commissioner, uh, I want to thank you for your time as Chair and all the time you spent out in Western Washtenaw County, uh, enabling us to do a, take this, this board on the, on a road show and you go to Sylvan Township and talk about broadband. Uh, and really highlight, uh, what people, uh, have been experiencing all across the county with, with the lack of that service. And um, you know, your leadership as Chair was a big, big part of us getting that moving. Uh, you know, I personally appreciate your, your support and your willingness to talk when I became a member of this body. And uh, as I kind of learned my way around, uh, you were definitely a support to me. Uh, and some of the things that you wanted to achieve as Chair, the, the staff position that Peter holds and is vacating. But the, the whole idea around getting the word out about what we do, uh, so that residents of this county can access resources and understand what's available, uh, you know, was something that we talked about very early on. And uh, you helped bring that to, to fruition and make those steps forward. Uh, you, you went through a laundry list of accomplishments and, and what I'm still gonna refer to is your young life at this point. You've had quite an amazing year, uh, yourself here. And uh, uh, you know, I think passion for what we do is a common theme amongst the three of you who are uh, departing this body after this meeting. Uh, and you know, I look forward to, uh, through my day job, the opportunity to talk to you about health and human services issues in Lansing and, and take what you've learned here at the county, uh, about CMH and about Medicaid services, and hopefully apply that to what you're gonna be working on in Lansing. Uh, so I, uh, greatly appreciate the work that you've done and the diligence you take, uh, whether it's amendments or working things through the process. I mean, deep respect for your dedication to this job. And I know you're gonna do the same thing in Lansing. Uh, so it's been, uh, been an honor working with you and, uh, best of luck in Lansing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Morgan, it's been a real honor to be able to serve with you. I'm so grateful for all the support that you've shown me over the years prior, before I was elected and during my time here. Uh, one thing I think is demonstrated by the amendments that you had today and and the question that you always ask is that you really care about every issue that comes before us. You do your homework. Uh, and sometimes that results in like multi-paragraph essay emails, which I will miss, which I will miss. Because it's, it's like you were always very well informed and you pushed all of us to be more informed, more prepared to have those kinds of conversations. And even when we debated here or had disagreements, I never once doubted that you cared about the county and that there was, you're always your first priority. Um, so I really appreciate that. Uh, and I will miss, I will miss the really long emails and the many, many questions. One thing I hope is that you will join us for public comment and, uh, give us, like, give us a three-minute set of questions from time to time. But congratulations on your next step. Uh, you'll still be hearing from all of us. It'll be great to have you as a partner in Lansing.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I could say Commissioner Morgan, you're just Jason sitting next to me. Um, when I first started talking to people about like what, if I was interested in doing this, um, I was out to dinner with some people who were like, look at Jason Morgan. Uh, and like that was years before I even thought about running for the commission. And so even though you're many moons younger than me, you are somebody to look to, to see like, like what to do to, to serve our community. And I appreciate that. More than that, I appreciate your friendship and, um, the collegiality that we've had on this board together. We have not, uh, uh, we are the two gay people, but guess what? We don't always agree. Um, and we've had some, some serious debates and discussions about things. And I have very much always appreciated your collegiality in that and recognizing that we can have a debate and a discussion and disagree, and that we can still be friends and understand what it means to work together on a board of commissioners. That has, um, is a model, I think, uh, that people could look to across the country for how you can have that, that disagreement and still work towards the same cause. I'm so excited to see what you're gonna do in Lansing. Um, I want to come over to your house and hear about it all the time. I can't believe that you're not gonna be, I'm gonna cry a little bit. I can't believe you're not gonna be sitting next to me at these board meetings where you have been since I've gotten here. And, um, I can't say anything more because I'm just gonna start to cry. So, um, best of luck to you. And I know this is not the end of our friendship. Um, and I can't wait to see what you keep doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Beeman?
All right, I'm not gonna get through this. You know, I'm not Jason. Um, I value your friendship. I value your leadership. You better love you in Lansing the way we love you. Um, our first meeting where I was elected, uh, you took us all and you showed us all our strengths. And you put us on path within this commission to work to the best of those strengths. And that's what a leader does. A leader finds the best in you and pushes that forward from within you. Yeah. Well, um, and you're an inspiration to so many. You inspired me. I'm here because of you. And, um, you're gonna continue to be an inspiration to so many as you keep going through Lansing. So, gonna miss you.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Thanks, Chair. Christian Morgan, uh, I believe we met in two thousand eight, I believe it was. And you were, two thousand, with the, uh, right, yeah, you were with, uh, Mr. Dingell as Congressman. And, uh, when they passed her, he had, they were, they were buddies and confidants. And, uh, we always see, uh, you with him. And I, I remember taking you around and my family, I had a, a beautiful aunt, uh, who, who passed. He's always around me. And one day you didn't come with me, and she said, where's the little boy you had with you? You know, you have that, that, that young look on you, man, but you have a, a wisdom of, of government and helping others that is, you know, extraordinary. It really is, as much as you do. You know, I, I know, I don't know how you find the time and the effort and the energy to do it all. I appreciated the fact that you did, uh, leave Lansing to take the leadership of being the Chair of this board under control to where you, because we were in some pretty heavy situations. And it would have been falling on me if you had have left. And it's like, to have you there with your expertise and your experience, uh, helped us get through that COVID, uh, uh, in, in a manner that was very humanistic and very caring about, uh, our residents. Um, you have been, as, as Commissioner, uh, Beeman said, a leader, a, a, a strong leader. I mean, even as I think about, uh, Mrs. Commissioner Beeman's race, that first year, uh, you put it to task, man, to get people to knock on doors. At least you won by thirty-nine votes, something like that. It was really close. But you became not only a, a person that was representing your district, but a person who cared about who represents each district in order to have people that we could work with together. And we became a hard democratic board and still are. Uh, and that's because of your leadership. And I appreciate that because what I've seen, you know, I, I see things in you, uh, that's gonna take you far. Uh, uh, I joke about your, your age. I'm old enough to be your dad. And I, but the thing is, you know, if I had a son, I wish he was like you, but I got daughters. So, but thank you for all your service and as you continue to move to the next level. Uh, we'll see you around and I'll, I'll be watching and, you know, if I need to speak to you about some things, I'm su- sure your door will always be open. And, uh, you know, it's just, you know, keep doing what you're doing. And you, you're gonna be okay. All right. Oh, and when, when, I'm not, not sure. But when you and your partner, John, come together, I'm wishing you both the best in your life and your relationship. Uh, I, I have watched you, and you have not looked at anyone like that. Though there were some before, and I was kind of concerned about you. Uh, because it's like, okay, well, wait a minute, didn't I just meet, uh? But, uh, congratulations on settling down, young man. You need to. And continue to work hard. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Commissioner Labar?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, Commissioner Morgan, I, I also had the chance to meet you, uh, I think when you were first starting out for Congressman Dingell. And I want to say that was two thousand eleven, right? Um, Mr. Dingell's not listed on the resolution. Um, and neither is Bart Stupak. And I'm gonna go a little over my skis here, um, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Um, Jason, I hope, I hope the folks in Lansing habitually underestimate you. I hope they do what is easy and look at you and see somebody who is, uh, pleasant and well-meaning. Um, and don't understand how hard you grind in the background. Uh, and what moments of bravery you have shown that they're never gonna know about. There is, I mentioned, uh, Bart Stupak, who I interned for a few years before you. Um, when Jason was, I think, twenty-two, maybe I'm off on the year, but, you know, a, a young, young person. And, you know, Jason's just really young, no matter what. you know, Jason's just really young, no matter what. This guy had the courage to tell his boss that he didn't know if he could keep working for him because he wanted to be able to marry who he loved. I've worked for politicians. I've worked for elected officials. They do many things right. One thing nearly all of them do is have some level of intimidation when you are dependent on them for the job you're in. And Bart Stupak is a good guy, don't get me wrong, but to have the courage to speak your convictions at that age in that spot, it says something about somebody's character. And if you sniff around a little bit on Jason, you'll see he did not just spring up with with the path made easy for him. He's put in the work. And he scrapped and he's done the things he needs to do to know what he needs to know, to build the network he needs to succeed. And I think there are gonna be some fights in Lansing that he's gonna play the lead on, both publicly and privately, that will benefit not just people in this room and in earshot, but throughout the state. And I'd encourage you, Jason, please don't set a ceiling. You have served already in your relatively young life with no regard, you know, for that ultimate clock. And that is to your immense credit. I hope you set no ceiling, though, in terms of what position you find yourself in where you could help other human beings. And so I just wish you luck. And I also say, just on a human level, I appreciate that you're a good human being. And that goes unsaid too often. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your kindness. And thank you for your courage.
All right, then it's my turn. So there is, there will be people who love you in Lansing and one of them will be me. And I'm excited to be able to work with you in that capacity and so many things that that I've accomplished, that we've accomplished, but things that were near and dear to my heart wouldn't happen without your involvement. Climate Action Plan is probably crowning jewel of, well, it's one of them. I think sometimes it's been kind of wild to look at the agenda and see all the important things that we're doing as a board and 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 how much work you put into so many of them that what might have been newsworthy just ended up not being mentioned really at all outside of the meeting because we've done so much good work. And we started working together during my first campaign and and you jumped right in to be helpful. I I didn't have the kind of political experience that that you've had and you've always been happy to share with me, happy to share your contacts, your knowledge and and your labor. You've spent hours working with me to to elect me, but also to elect other people around this table. And it's made a difference in our board and what we've been able to accomplish for our community. And I I would dare say that it's changed to a certain extent how we've campaigned in our state. And and that you've helped to bring about this really incredible opportunity that our state has right now and appreciate that as well. So, you know, of course, we could all go on for a really long time. But I'm really, really just so pleased to be able to work with you, so pleased that that we'll be able to tag team into the future for the benefit of our community and our state. And just glad to know you all the way around. And John. All right, so the next, oh, wait, we have to vote. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Shing.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Machieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Item pass.
Yay. All right, the next is a resolution honoring Commissioner Sue Shink for her service as a member of the Board of Commissioners.
My name is Andy and I'm here tonight to do my part to recognize Sue Shink. We have been fortunate over these last twenty four months now to have Sue as our chair of this body. And I want to read this resolution and then just say a brief remark. Whereas Sue Shink was first elected by the people of the city of Ann Arbor, the townships of Ann Arbor, Northfield, Salem, Superior, Webster, to represent District One on the Washington County Board of Commissioners in two thousand eighteen, followed by one reelection in twenty twenty, ultimately serving from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two. And whereas prior to joining the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Shink served as Northfield Township trustee. And whereas following her bachelor's degree, her bachelor's, master's in law degrees from the University of Michigan, Commissioner Shink has dedicated her career to advocacy and public service, leading land conservation efforts, working to combat harmful pollutants in her community, providing legal services to our community's most vulnerable residents and more. And whereas from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, Commissioner Shink served as chair of the Washington County Board of Commissioners after serving as chair of working session from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Whereas during her ten years county commissioner, Shink championed expanding resources for vulnerable members of our community, setting and taking action toward bold climate goals, bridging the digital divide by investing in broadband infrastructure, creating opportunity for youth by supporting investments in their future and advancing policy to prevent community violence and reform the criminal justice system. And whereas Commissioner Commissioner Shink has represented her constituents in the county on a number of important groups, including the Agricultural Land Preservation Advisory Committee, the Environmental Council, Huron River, Huron River Watershed Council, the Urban County Executive Committee, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the Washington County Food Policy Council, the Coalition for Action on Remediation of Dioxin, Dioxane, AKA card, and others. Whereas on November eighth, twenty twenty two, Sue Shink was elected to serve as state senator for the fourteenth district of the Michigan State Senate. And whereas a member of the Michigan State Senate, Senator-elect Shink will serve the state of Michigan by representing Washington County constituents in the cities of Ann Arbor, Dexter, Chelsea, and the townships of Ann Arbor, Northfield, Webster, Sia, Lodi, Dexter, Freedom, Sharon, Lima, Linden, Sylvan, Salem. Just I got mileage on it, just reading that. As well as much of Jackson County. And whereas with her election to the Michigan State Senate, Sue Shink will leave the Washington County Board of Commissioners at the conclusion of its twenty one, twenty two term. Now therefore be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes honors and expresses its most sincere appreciation to Sue Shink for her service to Washington County. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners recognizes Commissioner Shink's commitment to fostering collaboration to ensure equitable allocation of resources to every corner of Washington County and her dedication to encouraging generational success by supporting youth and the most vulnerable members of our community. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners wish Commissioner Shink great success in her future career and look forward to continuing to work with her as a representative of our county in Lansing. Chair Shink, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much. So thank you. I was gonna save my remarks for Report of the Chair because I don't often have a report of the chair and I thought this would be a good time. And then I realized that one of the the resolutions they were about to consider could take a while. So I'll just say my 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 remarks now. This is the best job I've ever had. Better than than being a lifeguard, better than being a clerk to a to a circuit court judge. Not better than being a mom, but that's not a job. That's that's life. And and I think the thing that I love most is is the opportunity to serve and to build those relationships in the community. And and that's what keeps me going each and every day. I I wake up, I'm so excited to be able to do just that. And, you know, fortunately for being being a state senator, it'll be the same sort of service in a different capacity. And so I want to thank a lot of people, specifically the the thirty thousand voters that trusted me. I guess it wasn't all of them, but the majority of them. And the family all the time. And I want it partially so I could see this is my husband Tom Hatch, who has really been supportive in a way that maybe isn't really fair to ask. And and maybe some of the spouses and partners of people here are are living the same thing where I'm on the phone all the time about the county. I'm at meetings about the county. I double book because I'm going to an event for the county. And time spent where where Tom took care of our kids, took care of our animals, took care of our our life responsibilities so that I could serve our residents. And I'm incredibly grateful to you and it's not gonna get better. And I would continue incredibly grateful to you. I am also very grateful to our staff. Fourteen hundred people work for Washington County, serving our residents. We have about three hundred and seventy five thousand people in our county and it's been my experience that everybody who works for the county cares and is trying their best to deliver the services that this county has to deliver, which which are vast. And I'll talk a little bit more about it. But I want to say thank you, Greg, for working with me. It's it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. I've learned so much from you. And you love the people of this county so much. If I'm ever in a hostage situation, I will call Commissioner Labar. But if I'm ever in a crisis, I will call you. A different kind of crisis. Diane, we've already talked a lot about how amazing you are and and the warm welcome and and the care to make sure that everything is going well and the attention to detail. I just really appreciate it. And your candy bowl. Peter, it's it's been great to work with you. I don't know if everybody realizes that when the American Rescue Plan funds came, there was a possibility that those funds might not be used for anything transformative, that we might just use it to fill budgetary holes or build roundabouts or something like that. Sorry, road commission. Um, it wasn't there. I was, this was just being trying to be funny, but Peter worked overtime with me and with the other commissioners and with staff to make sure that the work that we did with the American Rescue Plan Funds was transformative in a way that took an incredible amount of thought and effort. And I'm just really grateful to you to have translated so much of of what we envisioned into reality. And and that wasn't easy. And it's so we, you know, we say things like, well, it's really hard, right? What does hard mean? Hard means uncomfortable. Hard means time spent that you could have been doing something else, the headaches, the the aggravation. And and Peter was up for all of it. And I wish you well in your next endeavor. It's it's been really great to work with you. Andrew, it's been great to work with you. It's been great to work with everybody. But Andrew is always there, especially when we were working a person to make sure that whatever we're trying to do work, Andrew can do pretty much anything as far as I can tell. And and that's just amazing to have have you put that kind of effort and thought into everything that you do. And and then April Peronic, who was critical to getting the the Climate Action Plan going. It's been great to work with Koi Vaughn and Megan Baumfiglio and Ginny Lykum at Parks. Parks has been a big part of my life here at the county. We have the most amazing parks. And if if you haven't been to all of them, make it. There's there's a whole event around it. In terms of working on the community violence intervention, which has been some of the most meaningful work that I've ever done because it really is literally saving lives. It's been great to work with Sheriff Jerry Clayton, Derek Jackson, Florence Roberson, and Kathy Wyatt and many others. To my fellow commissioners, as chair, I know that sometimes it's hard, it's hard, right? Like, we have to bring us all together. We have to to work in a cohesive way and we have to make space for everybody. And I appreciate the trust and support and the the pushback at times that everybody gave because that's how this thing works. And I think that we've done an amazing job. Our felt my fellow electeds, our clerk, our treasurer, our sheriff, Congresswoman Dingle, our state representatives, they all work really hard. We're so fortunate in this county. Okay, I'm just could go on forever. So sorry. But there have been so many issues that that we've worked on and it's taken the whole community, all of those I've mentioned, people who run nonprofits, our residents, to make it work. We dealt with road commission issues. We have a much more responsive road commission than when I came into office. The dioxane plume, it's still creeping along, but we're in a much better position than we would have been otherwise without the effort of the forty elected officials across this county and all of our work. Climate Action Plan, we've talked a lot about that. It's just, it's incredibly important. And when we turn, talk about the hope for this community, that Climate Action Plan is gonna be a lot about keeping this community livable and thriving. Our response to COVID, have to thank our health department so much. How many lives this, the people of this county, the staff and and the residents save, we'll never know. And thank God, we'll never know, right? We lost too many as it was. Ensuring testing, protection, supplies, vaccination rollout, which wasn't always always easy. And 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 we we had to go to the community and find out how to do it better, but we did it. OCD spent a lot of time preventing evictions, supporting our businesses, doing everything we could to help people's efforts to stay safe. And can you see your function and keep our businesses going and our kids okay? A lot of people are still struggling to recover from that. And we're gonna be here to help that happen. Your guys are gonna be here to help to make that happen. I'll I'll be doing what I can from the state. Getting broadband to our whole county, like there's there's nobody else who's doing that right now. And so our county is so many times a remodel for the state. And that's because of our hard work and and so many, again, township officials, Bar Fuller, Ben Feynman, all these people who are coming together to work with us and 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 we've got to keep it going. We've gotten childcare access increased in our community. The Community Priority Fund is going to be transformative. I've already heard that it's making a difference in people's lives. Even just the hope of knowing that it's happening is making a huge difference in people's lives. And that's incredible. It's an incredible opportunity. Direct assistance to households is gonna make things easier for so many people. We increased the capacity of our conservation district. We've saved over thousands of acres, natural areas that were really hugely important during the pandemic. We have a new park, Stabler Park. It's it's been owned by the county for many years. But it's becoming something that the public is using. There's a Michigan folk school so you can go and learn crafts, use your hands. For me, it's been really meaningful because Don Stabler was my friend. And it's part of how I came, knowing Don was part of how I came to this county and part of how I got involved in land preservation and thus in county government. Border to Border Trail, it's, I mean, it's so awesome. The rec center and even dealing with the New Human Services Partnership, dealing with having some partners leave and how do we reimagine that? And how do we work with our community partners? Changing just from caring for the fallout from trauma and poverty to addressing poverty and trauma at its root causes and still caring for the people who have who still really need those the supportive services. And I know that's something you're gonna be grappling with into the future. We've also worked to help reform our criminal legal system. The Conviction Integrity Expungement Unit has expunged hundreds of people's records so that they can have more opportunities that they deserve. And also, a man is free from prison. He was wrongly convicted. This board and everything I'm mentioning, this board did. I'm not just talking about what I did. I'm talking about what we did. And and that man wouldn't be free without us having found a way to get that money to the prosecutor to do that work. We also supported diversion and special supports, which are gonna keep people out of jail and with their families. And I'm really proud of that, too. The goal of public service for me has always been to serve all of our residents as best we can and protecting care for those who are most vulnerable. I appreciate so much the opportunity to have worked with you as a team to make that happen. And you know, I just am so grateful for our friendship, hope that continues many years on into the future and hope that you will often come and visit me and I will be back too. But not to tell you what to do, find out what I can do to support your work because it's just awesome. So thank you very much. So I'm going to admit that it's a little weird to ask for people's comments, but since I am the chair and the chair is sometimes asked to do things that are a little weird, I'm just going to do it. Any comments? Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it is a little awkward. You know, you listing off everything that you've accomplished and the board has accomplished during your time on the board. I had me reflecting, I've only been on the board for one term. And it seems like, looking back on vaccine rollout and many of the other things in your list happened many, many years ago, and that's just not the case. A lot has been, this board has done a lot of work and the staff has done a lot of work. And, you know, we could go, I could go on a long time and talk about all the many things that we worked on together during my time in leadership with you as chair. Just want to highlight a few. You've listed all of them, but I'll jump into them. One of the things I appreciated most about you as chair is that you really took a view of working to support the entire county. So not just your district, but all of our districts. And I'm never going to forget the times that you've gone with me to the homes of families who've lost their children to gun violence and sat and talked with families in my district and attended funerals with Administrator Dill and I. And then you really leaning into the work around violence interruption. That's been integral to us being as successful with it as we have been. I don't think we will have been successful at that if you didn't support that. If we didn't have support from people outside of the districts that are really struggling with that as an issue. And I'll always be grateful for that. And as you mentioned, we can already see some of the positive effects of having participated in that work. I'll also, and this one comes with an ask, talk a bit about children's savings accounts. So you've been a champion for us moving that work forward well before I got elected and then started pushing it on the board. And then we were able to, you know, make that happen thanks to American Rescue Plan dollars, and that work is starting. So grateful to be able to see that, and that's something that I think you can look back on five, ten years from now and see the success that we're going to have in Washtenaw County because of the work that you put into doing that. The ask is that I know Governor Whitmer is interested in children's savings accounts, saying, maybe do what you can to be able to get some more funding to that so we can expand the program here even further. But I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done. I know it comes with great sacrifice. We've talked about how Commissioner Morgan had to leave his other job when he was chair. I know you work more than full-time, like, double time at this. And it's a sacrifice that people won't ever see. So I'm really grateful for everything that you've done, very grateful for our friendship. And we will be, you know, talking to you and seeing how we can be really good partners between the county and the state. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
I just want to say, I think Sue's, Chair Schink's service and passion has been just incredible. Sue, you're certainly one of the hardest-working and passionate people I've ever met and worked with. And I've really appreciated, as Commissioner Hodge was talking about, the true service countywide as chair and as a commissioner. Every step of the way and the time that I've known you long, even before you were officially on the board, you had the same mindset that many of us had, which was that we really are one county and that we are all working together, and we worked very hard to get folks elected to seats to truly serve their constituents in the best way possible. It certainly has never meant everyone agreeing on everything or voting the same way in terms of those that we've worked with, but always making sure that every resident is served by the best person that they possibly can be. And I know that's something you've always been so committed to and supportive of and pushed for. And it's been really exciting to work with you to do that. And I think the other big thing was true service as chair to the whole board, which I think is something really, really important. I look forward to our, well, I look forward to our next chair continuing that legacy that I certainly learned from Commissioner Labar. And I know that you have carried through, that I hope our next chair will continue that, because it really is. You really are a servant to the board and to the community as chair of this board and leadership in this board. So I have respected and appreciated that. That has also meant sometimes telling me no, and that's fine. That's how it's supposed to work. But lastly, I'll just say your unwavering commitment to always doing what is right is something that I have found to be incredible. When oftentimes, serving in public office and local office is a a strength that you can stand on to run for higher office. Sometimes it's also something that people will use to attack us. And we saw that happen in your race to move to the state level. And you stood one hundred percent on your principles and said, no, this is what I support. It was the violence intervention work that is so critically important and said, this is why we're supporting this. It is working, we are saving lives. And quite frankly, I don't care what the political consequences may be or what somebody's going to throw at me. And that is something that is a true testament to a public servant that I just have so much respect and appreciation for. And it's really hard to do many days. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And I look forward to serving with you and to serving everyone here with you together and continuing to be a team as a county. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I want to talk for just a quick minute about your leadership, because when you stepped into the role of chair, we didn't have this happily ever after picture in our heads of COVID. We were still in a pandemic. We didn't have ARPA funds in our laps. We had all of these things that we were working towards, and we had goals, and we were hopeful that options were coming our way, but we didn't know what they were. And so you stepped up and you rose to that challenge, not knowing what was going to happen, as much as we didn't know what had happened, you know, in the previous term when COVID landed in our laps. And so I'm just very grateful for your leadership in a time of such struggle to be able to just step into that space to work, to solve problems without easy answers. So I'm very grateful for that. Grateful for your friendship, grateful for how you care about who does serve, that we serve all residents from the rural to the urban to suburban that we're connecting with everyone and hearing all of their stories and all of their issues. And I know you're going to continue that work in Lansing, and I'll miss you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sue, when I think about your time here, I'm going to think about the road commission. And I'm going to think about those big mowers knocking down branches on the side of the road. And the work that you had a lot of influence on to to advance our relationship with them. And I'm going to think about the dioxane plume and the conversations we've had about that and the process that we went through. And I very much appreciated the discussions we had about that process as well. But I believe that as you move on to the state senate, I think you're the only new member of the senate that doesn't have state legislative experience. Is that true?
There's one other.
One other person? They're not ready for you. I think one of the things that that you see in working with you is you bring that spirit of community and activism and unconventional ways. And I think you're going to sneak up on them and get some positive things done pretty early on. So as with Representative elect Morgan, I look forward to working with you through my day job on health and human services issues and on behalf of the things that we're doing here at the county as well. But best of luck to you, and I'm quite proud to have you as my state senator. Best of luck.
Mr. Jefferson?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, when we saw you before you became a commissioner, during your three minutes, was it speaking on issues about the road commission? There was something about you there, and I said to myself, there's something about her that makes her seem to belong as a fighter at this table. And then you came, and it was right after you were elected, we talked about your passion to help people that are in positions to not help themselves and how that was your ideal for coming here. And it's been a a time that I've watched you evolve into that. You have, Mr. Justin Masiaski said it well, but you have an underlying fire that people don't see coming when you have a passion to make something happen and get it done. It's a, it's a type of passion that gives me the idea that, you know, you have this insight to where the things that need to be done, we'll get it because you have trust in your own belief about what it takes to get things done. So I really appreciated that about you and how you have walked into our communities to work with people that have been in the need of ways of finding some relief for gun violence. And those things that you have helped to bring into my community and the community of District Five and just in Hodge will be life-changing, and they are life-changing. They're saving lives, and that is a commitment that you put your heart into. Wanting to learn, wanting to find out what the needs were, what people were saying and how they were feeling. And that took a lot of time and took a lot of cultural change and respect for each other. So, you know, the differences that you ran into, you know, you evaluated them, analyzed them, and saw fit to bring into our community those living, lived experience members of our community to help them get those things that they could help our youth and young adults with. So I appreciate that about you, really. So thank you so much for being a concerned person about the most. I've asked people several times, somebody had come up to me and say, well, what can I do? I say, can you work with our teenagers? And they say, oh, no, you know. But that's where we need the most help, and I appreciate that about you. So congratulations on your election and continue to work. And I know when you spoke about Tom, Tom has been by your side, and he doesn't complain. And he's a great guy for you and a good support for you. I wish you both the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Schink, the last time I might say that, maybe not, we still have more business. You've been chair for two years, but it's been like twenty. And I will keep my remarks short, because I think a lot of people have said things, I would just be echoing them. And who wants to live in an echo chamber? I think that your global view of this area that you have approached this county work is going to serve you really well in Lansing. I think that you will be able to advocate for this community really well. And I think that what we'll see is how you then can transfer that to thinking about how you can advocate for Michigan really well and understand that if we do good things here and how that can transfer out to the rest of the state. I one hundred percent can see you doing that. I think that I would love to see you bring some polluter pay things forward when you get there. And I know from working with you, like Commissioner Masiaski, with the dioxane plume, that that is something you are passionate about. And then I am more than willing to help you work on at your time in Lansing and get that work done. Your empathy and your dedication are two really essential parts of who you are as a public servant. And not everybody doing this work has those two elements. They do the work for whatever reasons, but I think that you are driven by a sense of empathy and wanting to make things better for other people. And I applaud that, and I cannot wait to see what you're doing in Lansing and work with you and anything I can continue to do to help you here, I'm there. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, I think we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Schink?
I'm supposed to abstain. Pretty self-interested in this one.
Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Labar? Commissioner Masiaski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. All right, next, we're considering, actually, yeah, we're taking that separately, the supplemental, a resolution reaffirming the support of the Board of Commissioners for the continued allocation of additional resources to support the implementation of the countywide classification compensation program. Commissioner Hodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pulled this just for a brief, separate discussion here. I just wanted to say where it came from, since it's a supplemental. I know how the board sometimes feels about supplemental. So this came from conversations that Commissioner Labar and Administrator Dill had over the Thanksgiving holiday, just given some of the comments that we heard from staff. At a previous meeting, we wanted to figure out what are some ways that we can really articulate that we are committed, not just what we've already committed to in MAG, but also how do we go about accelerating people getting to that market rate and going beyond that? So this talks a bit about, outlines the current set of commitments we've already made, and it makes a further commitment to us looking at a variety of different strategies to do that. I don't know if staff or anyone else or Commissioner Labar wants to say anything more about it, but that's the gist of what this is here for. And I say, expect to see more on this, maybe in January or February.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we can call the roll.
Commissioner Schink? Commissioner Beaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Labar? Commissioner Masiaski?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott? Item passed.
Thank you. And then finally, we have approval of plane. Any discussion?
We've already moved that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. All right, then, then we've already voted on as well. All right, next is item ten, report from the county administrator.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief. To our outgoing commissioners, I'd just like to say thank you. I think you now understand better the tremendous opportunity and responsibility that we all have to make life better for the residents of this county. Additionally, local government has the opportunity to go deeper than any other form of government, and I am just so grateful for the work that you all are doing, and I'm grateful to call you all colleagues. So I hope you move on to bigger and better things. Please stay connected to us. You are a huge part of what we've been able to accomplish over the last four years. And again, just so grateful to call you all colleagues. I had asked Diane Height to give you just a real quick update on where we're at with MAG. As you all know, she has led that work. We are making what I think is significant progress for the fourteen hundred employees of the organization. There's still much work to do. I am so incredibly grateful to you all for approving the supplemental this evening. I think it sends a powerful message to our staff. Diane?
So thank you. So just a real quick update, just to recap a little bit. We began negotiations with our labor partners back in February. We've spent a great deal of time on educating. The MAG system is very complex, and so we had to go through a lot of education and overview with the labor partners throughout this past year. As of today, or as of actually the mid, middle of November, eleven of the county's sixteen bargaining units, plus the county's non-union workforce, have moved to the new classification and compensation structure. So we have done that initial implementation that started back in September. As groups signed on letters of understanding, tentative agreements and whatnot, we began to go through implementation. So those first groups were the prosecutors and public defenders, the nurses, TPOE, I'm at the district court. And then we have since settled with Mansfield Local twenty-seven thirty-three. And implementation for that group will begin as of the pay this Friday. And then another area for implementation on the pay right before the
And then, um, an- another area for implementation on the pay right before, um, the Christmas holiday, the 23rd. Um, there will be, um, a second round of, of the implementation, if you will, that will happen in the first part of 2023. Um, but so we are moving along very nicely. I, I believe, like I said, 11 of our 16, um, bargaining units, um, have reached agreement and we, um, payroll and, um, finance, excuse me, and HR have been moving through that implementation process. Um, we do, we have been in discussions, um, with the remaining bargaining units to negotiate the transition. Have a meeting, we've had meetings with the POM, had initial discussions with, um, the supervisors' union on a couple of elements, um, and requested some discussions there. Meeting next week with the other unit of the TPOAM. So we have the POM, COM, TPOM, um, out, another group out at the district court that has about six employees. And then we have the supervisor. So I think we are making, um, good progress and appreciate all the support that, um, this board has provided, um, throughout, not just since the beginning of MAG, but really as we've worked with our labor partners this year. So thank you.
Thank you Diane. That will conclude my report.
Thank you. Um, next, reported the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I already gave a pretty lengthy report. Um, just want to say again, you know, colleagues, it's been so great to work with you and, and, and looking forward to continuing, um, a somewhat changed but, but long lasting relationship. Items for current or future discussion? We, um, are going to be moving into a closed session for pending litigation. So I am looking for a motion from Commissioner Hodge.
Yeah, I know that we go into closed sections, closed session to discuss who been pending cases with Council Little versus Washtenaw County and Dunn versus Washtenaw County.
Do you have support for that?
Support.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, um, we need to roll, we'll vote.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yes.
Commissioner LaBarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Maschieski.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Shank.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So for, for those of, of you in the audience, um, not sure how long this will take. We will be coming back at the end, but, um, it could be a while. Support. Also like to take this opportunity to recognize Peter Lindeman. I, I was going to write a resolution, but I, I just kept working on other things because that's kind of the way it is with the county and, and I didn't have you to ask to do it. But I want to recognize, and I, I do, I mentioned this earlier, but the important role that you have played in the work that we have done for the past two years. It, it, it hasn't been an easy time. I think we probably as a board were presented with at least double the work.